All right. I called the Village of Marvin Park's Recreation Greenway Advisory Board Meeting to order at 9:03 a.m. I do determine there's a quorum with three of our members here and that would be myself, Bob, and John. The next item is adopt the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No. I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as it is written.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Adoption of the meeting minutes from August 7th, August 30th, October 2nd, December 4th, and January 15th. Minutes were distributed to you. Are there any corrections to them?
I didn't have any.
So do you have a motion to approve the minutes as distributed?
I make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes of 8:07, 18:00, 8:30, 18:00, 10:00, 2:00, 18:00, 12:00, 4:00, 18:00, and 1:15, 19:00 as they are written. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is public comments. There are no public so nothing on that. So the next up is park manager.
Park capital project list. You should have a copy of it. This is mostly updated from the changes you guys made, suggested that I make last time, requested. I'm suggesting that park tree removal for next year for safety and aesthetic reasons. I moved the park trail rebuild back a year. Not to say that that couldn't be moved up. Mary has put in a request for staff to look at possible fee and lieu money from one of the nearby neighborhoods. Potentially we might talk to council about, was it like 30 something of that?
No, it's the entire amount.
The entire amount.
What I would say is, I would like us to discuss, do you feel like you agree with the project or not? And then if we agree, I think it should be on the trails capital plan. And then I'll show the fee and lieu dollars there that would cover it. But there is, from the courtyards, we've determined it's a mile and a half away. It has to be in close proximity to be able to use a fee and lieu. It's a mile and a half away. So Chris is agreeing that she thinks that's close enough that we could use those dollars. Courtyards, it was like 76,000 in fee and lieu money. And we're using 29,000 for our portion for widening of Providence, the sidewalks. But, so we do have the funds. The question-
So what was the total amount for fee and lieu from?
From courtyards, it was 76,000.
Wow, okay.
So we do have the funds. The reason for the upgrade is now that that is our standard, the limestone pathways and so forth, it doesn't make sense to have the park not be the standard. Right now it's wood mulch and there are problems with erosion and so forth, so.
One thing I'm wondering, is that cost based upon the cost for the trails as we did before? Because am I correct in that it seems like the trails within the park are quite a bit wider?
Yeah, you'd only do it four foot wide.
Okay.
Because that is the standard reset.
Okay.
So it would still be wider, you know, the area would be wider.
But the limestone park would only be the four, okay.
But it would allow for strollers, you know, casual biking. I think the issues we've had with muddiness on the trail wouldn't be as bad. I'm for it. I think it's, you know, if that is our standard, that we should, you know, have the same standards in the park. But, you know, I want your feedback too.
One question I have, fee and lieu money, are there time restraints on that? Like once somebody puts the fee and lieu money, there's no time restraint for when it needs respect?
Not according to how I read the ordinance, no. It just talks about the proximity. And I agree with Mary, I think it's close, but I did say that ultimately that's council's decision. We've never used any of our fee and lieu money before. Well, not, I mean, we've got a pot of it there. For most recent neighborhoods, we haven't used any of that.
And that fee and lieu that we're talking about, the 76 is just what came from courtyards.
When we get into the rest of the trails, I've actually allocated the fee and lieu dollars to everything, all the money.
Because I know initially that fee and lieu for, I don't know if we tagged it to it or something, but the intent was kind of to connect some of the internal things that they have to potentially the power line thing. Because the power line thing kind of goes right through or next to them there. But, you know, even using just 22 of the 76, I forgot that it was that large, 76, so.
So saying that aside, I just wanted to make sure that you guys agree that it's something we should do to upgrade the trails in the park.
Yeah, I agree.
So again, Derek, I think you should take it off yours and we'll put it on the greenways. So we don't double count it.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, because initially, was it, were we told initially that trail stuff for the park had to come out of the park budget? Now we're saying, well, we can move some of this money over.
Well, it was really maintenance type things that was, they were handled through the operating budget.
Yeah.
But to me, this is, it's a greenway.
Implementing.
Yeah. So Derek, you can go on.
Okay, so the lakeside corridor, kind of move that up to number two as your request with 10,000 next year for planning, engineering specs. That was just a ballpark figure we came up with. That's obviously for you guys to sell to council.
And the 9,000?
Is that talking about the pavilion thing?
Yeah, and the bathrooms, picnic shelter and bathrooms altogether. The Tullamore parking lot, I left that on there because I'm looking at getting a quote for the concrete entry strip. You know, we talked about doing like just eight feet strip to keep the gravel from coming out. But I also was going to add in what it would cost to pave the parking lot. So I'm hoping to get those numbers for you before you take it to council Friday. Playset funding, I just, I put in 35 annually as kind of building up a reserve pot for when the playground needs to be replaced in five to six years approximately. Roundabout-
Chris, would it be better to say playset reserve so that they understand that this is accumulating money?
You can say it, either way, that's fine.
I just didn't think, wanted them to think it was an operating.
No, I think by saying funding, I mean it sort of like gives the impression we're setting it aside. Because we all know we can't do that for $3,500.
Right.
No, I think either way is fine.
Roundabout landscaping, Christina asked me to put that in there. I think, Mary, are you going to talk more about that a little bit later?
Well, briefly, the DOT and I, we were crossing a paint telephone tag. And then on Friday, my mother-in-law fell and I had to go to the hospital and he called me right when all that was going on. So I just told him, could we talk in like a week? So I'm still trying to get with him to ask, you know, what are the rules? Because the rules that they sent to me were for highway plan things. They don't really have rules for roundabouts. And I had some other questions like, what if we do nothing? Are they going to maintain it? What are they going to do? Are they just going to know it, you know, once a month or whatever? So no, no updates.
The wayfinding signs, that's the countywide project I told you guys about a few months ago. And then-
Do you mind going back over that?
Yeah, that's a joint initiative that Union County kind of initiated. But looking at, an engineering firm is coming in and proposing a common theme of wayfinding signs throughout the county with each municipality having sort of its own flair and style to it. So there would be similarities in maybe the shape and the size and, but Marvin's would look different than Waxall's.
What's a wayfinding sign?
It's like, it would just have an arrow on it that says, you know, Marvin Ridge High School, this way. Marvin Eford Park, that way, Town Hall. You see them as you're going into downtown Waxall or downtown Indian Trail. It's a people to, it's a sign to help people find their way around to your various amenities that you want, want them to be able to find.
I would say the biggest things that we would have are really the school, you know. Well, you think the park, but we don't want to, if it's a private park, I don't know that we want, you know, unless it's open to the public, I don't know that you'd want to have that out there, is right?
Derek, do we get to help Union County with our landmarks as John's kind of-
Yeah, so that's our portion as we come in and say- Yeah, we say what, you know, what we want on it, what landmarks we would want to have.
And those would be like on Providence Road, the primary route, just, you know, I'm assuming or?
Could be all throughout town, I think.
Well, how was the $30,000 calculated?
It was just ballpark, 5,000 for engineer, or kind of planning and design and 25,000 for actual purchase of the signs.
It does seem high.
It could be.
Can I point out something? We, council has actually had $20,000 set aside as a reserve and fund balance for probably 10 or 15 years for signs that could be used to fund this. And one of the, some of the ideas a long time ago were signs that like as you wanted Marvin to know you were coming into Marvin. So it could be that that could help with funding for this.
Yeah, now in Landy's plan, I mean, there's some, I wouldn't call them big, but they're, they're not just a little sign. They're like fairly large signs. For the Village Center, there were some more elaborate things, which I could see them costing 20,000.
Yeah, I remember them, I remember us looking at particular like models of gateway signs. And they were structures more than signs, like welcome to Marvin.
And they had people, you know, to see how big they were and there was like a person standing beside it and it was a foot taller than they were. So I could see those kinds of signs costing 20,000, but not these little signs. Seems like that would be.
Yeah, but then you look at some of the ones like in Wax, I mean, even just their signs, I could see that being, but you know.
Is Union County, since this is kind of their project, are they going to contribute? Are they expecting the municipalities to pay for their portion?
Well, it was, it's a four-phase process and Union County is covering phase one and two, which is like the initial design, planning, you know, all the costs of all the meetings with this firm. We had a meeting, gosh, it's been a while, and Christina went over there. So we met with Weddington and a couple other, a couple other groups and, you know, I think everybody's on board with it. Everybody in the county is on board with it. But, yeah, so they're covering the first part, kind of establishing a set pattern. And then you come in and pay for how many signs you want, you know, what all you want written on it in your designs and stuff within that framework.
Could we change it to 20,000 and then put a footnote on what Chris brought up that it's in the general fund or has been? I don't know how you say that.
Well, it depends because it sounds like we're talking about two totally different things. If that's more a gateway entrance, you know, welcome to Marvin thing, that sounds different than what this is. So I don't know if that's earmarked for that type of signage.
Honestly, it would just be whatever council decides.
Yeah, okay.
I think they could be very similar personally. I don't, you know, it's like what Christine said, it's to be of the council, but.
Yeah, okay.
And then equipment needs, we just added that line yesterday, Christine and I, just to basically drop a bug in council's ear that, you know, Town Hall-
Is this truck tractor discussion you had for this?
Yeah, you know, it's, okay, we build Town Hall, how much landscaping is there going to be? Are you, do you want staff to take that over? If so, then we might need to, you know, have some equipment needs. Are we going to have a lawnmower there? Are we going to have to transport it back and forth from the park? You know, is that, is that just a trailer? Is that a second mower and a trailer? Is that a truck, a trailer? So, yeah, so it has to kind of snowball from once Town Hall's built and how much landscaping needs are there? How do you kind of get through this?
Derek, I just have one last question.
Go for it.
Lakeside, that does include the pavilion, correct?
Yes.
And the pavilion, was that not our number one priority?
Yes, it was.
Before the council? I guess my question is, why is the 90,000 in '22, '23 if it's our number one priority?
It does need to be moved over.
I mean, could we just move that portion if there's, I know that there's all kinds of concerns about funding, but could we, I think we said 25,000 was the portion for the pavilion?
For the picnic, yeah. You could explain that to them. Actually, the accompanying sheets that will go with this will have each project kind of laid out. This is just like a summary sheet.
So could we put the 25,000 in '20, '21?
For the pavilion itself?
Yeah, and then leave the bathrooms in '22, '23. And do we really need the engineering, so in this year, could we put the engineering in '21, '22? Since I'm assuming most of that's around the bathrooms, right?
Right, so you want to look at the picnic shelter at 25 for next year? Is that what you're saying?
Well, Christina said that she didn't think that was going to work, but 20, '21.
Okay.
And then maybe put the 10,000 in '21, '22?
Gotcha.
And then, and we can just tell them that's all around the bathrooms. And then that would, the remainder of bathrooms would be in '22, '23.
Okay. Yeah, I like it.
Christina, as we kind of understand, just where are we at with Town Hall? And is that going to be a big topic in this month's meetings in terms of how it will be financed or when it will be financed? Because we understand that, you know, in a year that you do a project like that, it's going to have an effect on what your funds are to do other things. So do we have an understanding of what the thoughts are in terms of timing there?
Yes, we're working on putting together with the architect the bid packages to go out for bid. And then, I don't have all the stuff with me, but the timeline's pretty tight to where we're going to try to break ground by like May. So I know we're going to, I mean, we're moving to try to get this going. In terms of financing, I mean, I think we're planning on trying to pay cash for it. I don't think we're going to finance it.
Well, I remember when we did the park, the cost of money, we had the, we had the money to actually self-finance it. But they decided to finance it anyway because the cost of the money that the state-
And we may do that. I think we're waiting to get the bids back to see what the numbers are actually coming in at before we make a final decision.
And that's more what I was understanding because if we're putting out a big chunk of change, that's different than if we're financing it in terms of how it might affect some of these projects.
And we're not, we're not going to know that until we get the bids back. Because, you know, it could come in at a million, it could come in at a million and a half. I mean, who knows? I'm not a builder, that is not my expertise, so we're going to wait and see where they come back at.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make these changes and pass them along to you guys for, to take to council for funding. All right, loop asphalt maintenance estimate, I am actually meeting with, we have some various numbers. Some are very high, some are the old ones that we got from Tarpon. But I'm actually meeting with a guy from Seal Master after this meeting, so I'll have you some numbers to take. But what this guy is proposing is crack seal, which we talked about being a good immediate priority at $1.25 to $1.50 a linear foot. And then doing a seal coat, which is just a spray which seals the asphalt. In his words, it keeps the water out and preserves the life of the asphalt. And that's a 12 to 15 cent square foot. So Christina and I met with him. Christina liked his products. She's going to look at some of their other services for the village and, you know, the village taking over the roads, but.
Do they clean the asphalt before they put a seal on? Like how does, like how does that process work?
That's a good question. I have no idea.
Because I feel like if you're going to put a seal on it, you want it like cleaned before it's sealed.
And right now for trail maintenance, we have about 47,000 in reserves, which this is where those dollars would come from. But I know that Christina's been looking for dollars for the Village Hall and she was hoping she could take, take those dollars. Anyway, I think the budget, I wish Chris was in here, but I think the budget for maintenance has been $14,000 a year and they've just sort of looked that over into the reserve after, if we don't use it. And that's how it's built up because we haven't done that much.
Yeah, that's about three years worth of that.
Yeah, and I'm sure that taking down the trees and stuff, that may have lowered to 46,000 too. But my thing is, we've got the reserve dollars and I don't want to lose them. And that's why I want to get a good estimate on how much this is going to cost to say, okay, we need to at least keep this amount of money in the reserve to pay for the loop maintenance. Because the regular maintenance doesn't really, it doesn't come out of this reserve. It's just like, you know, big projects kind of things.
So these are prices per foot, per square foot. Do we know how much we'd be talking about with either of those projects based upon how much cracked felt seal we need or what the full amount if we were to do the seal coat?
I won't know that until I walk it with him.
Okay, you'll walk, okay, you'll walk it with him. That's what I was wondering is, would he come up with that number? Or would we, are we coming up with that number?
Right, yeah. I'm going to walk it with him. Unfortunately, he couldn't get here yesterday. So it's after this meeting, but it's a two-step process. So it's a fill the cracks and then seal the whole thing.
And we looked at some old documentation and we think it's eight feet wide. And we think it's about between 8,300 and, did you see my email? And what was it, 9,200, something like that, linear feet long. So then you'd have to multiply that times to get the square footage, but it's a lot.
Yeah, in some sections it gets a little wider and, you know, coming up past the school, it gets a little more narrow. All right, loop tree maintenance, that was actually finished last week.
Good job.
Yeah, it looks really good. You'd have to really know how much was, you know, how much, how many dead trees were there. But they did, they did a really good job, so.
And what was that? Was that like 3,500?
37.
Okay, so that would come out of this 46,000, I think.
The 37? I think I paid for it. I'm just going to pay for it out of general repairs.
That was for the tree removal? So this is additional tree removal?
That's the park.
That's the park, okay. This was just tree stuff over by the-
Yeah, the loop.
That was a lot of work for 3,700 dollars. You did a great job of getting a price on that.
Well, you know, the more they can do at once, the better probably they can give you. And then lastly, pedestrian refuge estimate, Christina just used some of her old knowledge and estimated that at 10,000.
I was wondering, Vish, you know, there's the one that Marvin Creek recently found up right before Marvin elementary on Marvin School Road. I was wondering if you know of anybody in the AKA that could tell us if they did that, number one. I can't imagine the DOT did it.
So right on that?
Yeah.
Like the pedestrian?
Yes, just to see if they could get us a good price on that. Because that would be what we would need on the Firethorn Innisbrook. And that way we'd have good current information as far as how much it costs.
I can find out. So you want just a sign that says pedestrian crossing?
Well, it, there was, there's a couple of signs as you're approaching it, but then there's like a little median.
Yeah, they put that median.
It's a little island.
Yeah.
Sorry, do you think Marvin Creek did it? I thought the neighborhood across.
Yeah, John Millen.
Union County. So that they could get across to do the loop?
Correct.
That's what I thought.
I think that's part of the property.
John Millen was the builder.
No, it's, is it the gates at Charles Lee?
Okay.
Well, they feel a concrete sidewalk running over to the crossway.
Because they had a little wooden board that went over that, so I thought it was that neighborhood in unincorporated Union County.
But who gave the permission for them to put that median in the road?
DOT had to.
It doesn't come to the village, it goes directly.
DOT put on, yeah.
Anything that's within 10 feet of where the law has to go down.
Okay, so I'll check on email.
Yeah, because basically we just wanted to get a good current cost number so that we can put something out there to say. Because this would be for the Firethorn Innisbrook crossover. And I think they talked about one down at Joker.
To get across to-
I don't know where they're going to hook in though.
So dangerous, but the, I think the other thing is reducing the speed limit. I don't know where that stands.
They were doing a road study like two months ago, something like that, where they were out looking. But to my knowledge, we haven't gotten any.
Oh, the, right there at Joker and Marvin?
Yeah, to reduce the speed on-
I haven't seen any results on that. Yeah, because according to Robin's information that they gave her in 2017, you have to have 20 people per hour or more to lower the.
Oh gosh, I would think we have that. I mean, minus the middle of the night.
Yeah, I would think so too. So anyway, okay. So again, that makes a difference in how much you put in the capital plan if you've got to have two of them, but anyway.
Now the signs that you, the estimate you asked, Vish, is that an action for him for, for the minutes? Okay, can you repeat that? Because I didn't hear that conversation.
To contact Marvin Creek and if they did not, for current, for- To contact Marvin Creek, um, and if they did not, uh, for, for current, for how much it costs them to have that installed, and if they didn't do it, then inquire to the other neighborhoods.
Yeah, John Villan.
Yeah.
How much it costs to, for them to do what?
To put in the median on Marvin School Road.
Pedestrian.
Refugee and pedestrian sign.
Yeah, pedestrian refuge, I guess.
And that's, signs or just the refuge itself?
It's both.
Okay, signs and refuge.
I'm sure it's a package deal, yeah.
Okay, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
About, because we're talking about connecting Firethorn and Innisbrook, do you guys wanna do that before we do the loop in front of Innisbrook, and I know we're not planning on doing that until we know what is going on with the sewer?
Yeah, I think it would be in conjunction with that, so that's the issue.
So you're just trying to get some funds together for it?
Right.
Got it, okay.
And are you talking about the one that goes like, when you say Marvin Creek, is it the one like opposite the entrance to Kennerfield?
No, it's, it's the one on Marvin School Road.
Marvin School Road.
Right by Marvin Elementary for it.
It's this new one that we're here.
Oh, the new one, okay.
From Groose Edge to Marvin School Road, once you've come out, either you take left or right, you see the median in the road, and there is a pedestrian cross. That's the path.
Was there anything else with that action besides the pedestrian refuge and sign?
Was there a question you were waiting to ask Chris about?
Um, there wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're like, I wish Chris was here to ask.
Yeah, I bet, yeah.
Uh, loop maintenance?
Something about the loop maintenance.
Uh, maybe I'll come back.
Oh, no, might have been the timing of some of these, what, years?
Yeah, uh, I guess this is for Chris too, Chris, my understanding is that the maintenance that uh reserve we have for trails is the forty-six thousand six hundred, and the loop resurfacing and everything would come out of those dollars. And I know Christina's trying to find dollars for next year, so we would just wanna make sure that whatever Eric gets on his estimate, that's accounted for, so that it's not, you know, that, those do, those funds aren't transferred someplace for next year without knowing how much that is.
Oh, right, yes, no, that's fine. Those, that forty-six thousand is already in a capital project called Maintenance of Loop and Greenway, and so therefore, you would need a budget ordinance to move that money, so it would be a big deal to move it, it's not just like we can't randomly say that we're gonna use that money.
But even like when they're doing the budget for next year, I mean, if they, I just wanna make sure it doesn't get forgotten.
Yes, and, and that's fine, I think we might treat maintenance things differently. In next year's budget, Christina and I are working on some changes to the look of the budget, and, and moving that maintenance money under a general fund spending area is probably what we're gonna do.
Okay.
All right, uh, the next thing is the uh roundabout hardscaping and landscaping, and as, as I said, I keep crossing with the guys, so uh hopefully, by Friday, I'll know something.
So there's no update on it?
Right. So, Bob, here.
Mary asked if I could provide everyone an update on certification process for Marvin. Uh, we got our first meeting January the fifteenth, uh, we have six members, uh, that include Mary and I, and four others, and uh, I think we've got a really good team thus far, so.
Who, who are the others?
Oh, I'll go over that with you in just a second. Uh, our next meeting is tomorrow night, February the sixth, at six-thirty. And at our first meeting, we were thrown a little bit of a curveball. We were under the impression that we had a hundred and fifty points to go on to get certification, and that's what I reported to you guys, I said we need a hundred and fifty. Well, that wasn't accurate, it's three hundred. And it's a hundred and fifty for the habitat, and it's a hundred and fifty for yard certifications, so there's two buckets each having a hundred and fifty points. Well, when we found that out, I went back and did a, an analysis first of Charlotte, North Carolina. They have seven hundred and fifty points they're required to get versus our hundred and fifty in terms of yard certifications. We're twenty percent of their number, but we're point zero zero two percent of their population. And when you ran the numbers out, it's totally unrealistic for us to achieve a hundred and fifty when they're required to only achieve seven hundred and fifty.
And, and so just.
Well, is that just saying you need a hundred and fifty?
Well, you have to have homes, schools, or churches.
Churches.
We have a hundred and twenty homes, we have.
Well, we have twelve hundred homes.
Okay.
With, in six thousand five hundred population, Charlotte has over twelve hundred churches, it's called the City of Churches, we've got.
And they've got lots of parks.
And they got commercial property, we have none, so I put.
I mean, if you look, look at the number of schools in Charlotte versus, we only actually own one, you know, that.
Yeah.
So anyway, I, I put this thing together, presented to the National Wildlife Federation through Tara. They came back and said, you're absolutely correct, that we need to do something, so what they've done, instead of having two-eight-one-seven-three Marvin, is the geography, we have all of two-eight-one-seven-three now.
Oh.
So we have Waxall, we have, everything within two-eight-one-seven-three is our, is our pot to get a hundred and fifty points, which was a huge win for us, as this goes on, so what I'd like to do is walk everybody through on where we're at and what we need to accomplish.
Now, this hundred and fifty points is for what now?
To get certified.
Certified yard certifications.
But you said there's three hundred points.
There is, there's a hundred and fifty for the wildlife habitat program,
Okay.
and a hundred and fifty for the yards, the certification.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure what, what I'm, okay.
And I'm gonna give you a hard copy of these, so you can have those to.
Okay, well, I'll just, I, I, I'll just start it, and I'll just incorporate that in a minute.
So, whatever. Do you mind passing those around?
Oh, sure, sorry, I thought that was my word.
I'll let everybody get one.
So we're already stuck, yeah.
So, yeah, so, so what I'm doing, I'm keeping up with obviously, you know, the progress, this is our progress report. And you have points available, number of par, uh, properties certified, as you can see, we have seventy homes within the two-eight-one-seven-three zip code, certified currently, and.
I'll just mention one thing, like John, yours showed up with this one, we have a couple on my neighborhood that showed up, so it was a valid thing for them to use our zip code, because we were missing people in Marvin because of not getting it, so.
Yeah. So we have seventy points, and uh, I put, uh, there's three HOA common areas, including parks, uh, so we have fifteen points there, and we have, uh, right now, they have standards five for schools. I have not gotten, Tara's not giving me the school yet, because one of the things I'm gonna cover on the February the sixth meeting is a strategy to get the remaining sixty points. And based on what I've seen in the two-eight-one-seven-three zip code, there are a, a tremendous number of schools we can go after. Each one of those is worth five points, so the sixty points is achievable, much poorer than the hundred and fifty. Uh, so we're pretty excited about that, I think we'll be able to achieve that without any trouble at all, so we're gonna put, we're gonna put a team against that.
And we're meeting again on the sixth.
I could probably get like ten or twenty in my neighbor.
Yeah.
When do you need them by?
I'm sorry.
When do you need the points by?
Well, we've set a date, December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, is our deadline to accomplish all of this.
I would think if you, if we had like a table promoting this, that our few events at the park.
That, that's part of the plan.
Yeah. So we're, we're putting all that together, and we appreciate everybody's help, we've got we've got almost all the members of our team, with the exception of two, already having their yard certified, so there's, I noticed you were certified, yeah. So, uh, so we appreciate all that support.
I, I know you folks spoke at that one homeowners council meeting, but I think if you were to kind of put together a package for them that included a letter to their residents, that just make it easy for them, that, I mean, you might come up with a bunch in a hurry there, you know?
I think.
I, I'll do it for my neighborhood, so if you want me to, to, to commit to putting together a package.
Yeah, that'd be great, we appreciate it.
One of the things I, I was gonna talk about tomorrow night is that, um, we don't wanna get too far out ahead of ourselves, because we need to get organized so that we feel like we have, like when people start coming to us asking us questions, like some of the people said, well, some people are gonna say, well, what about, you know, invasive plant issues, that, they just felt like there were gonna be a lot of things, but I think by the first park event, which is May, we, we, we could have a table set up, and we'll have more of that, and also, I think that at that point, we'd like to start getting people to join the uh chapter, um, so that we have more people, not just our, this is just our organizational team, our leaders, or whatever you wanna call them, but people that actually are coming and helping for different, you know, string cleanups, or whatever it is, uh, but I'm hoping by May, we feel like we're organized enough, so that.
So you're trying to create kind of a, a group through this process that then will also kind of continue to exist and work on.
We need to continue to exist, this is an ongoing project, it's not just a one-year, John, it's multi-year.
Yeah.
So even though we get our points, and our goal is to get all this accomplished and become certified, once we're certified, we need to continue to be certified.
Yeah.
So, uh, and I, I think that's gonna be.
And that's providing education.
And things and.
What, what you do is, you, you're certified with the National Wildlife Federation, we are a chapter of the North Carolina Wildlife Federation, and those chapters are supported by the North Carolina chap, uh, organization, but the chapters, the chapters are made up of all kinds of people within the, the community, and they come to educational events and things like that, so. But that's what you really wanna do, and that's how you, because every year, there's certain things you have to do to maintain your National Wildlife Federation certification,
Yeah.
uh, and all those people within the chapter are helping us, you know, doing those, uh, by volunteering to do things.
Part of the points is, we have, we're getting away out of ourselves, but anyway, we have a two, there's a two, a three, and a five-year plan that has to be put together, as part of this whole thing, and what, what we're doing right now is in very genesis, is doing short-term, long-term goals, so these are really short-term goals, and December thirty-first, and as I, I said in our earlier meeting, some of these communities take up to two years to do it, and Mary and I don't feel it's gonna take that long, who knows in May, but our goal's December thirty-first. Let me pass these out, this is a.
Hey Bob, I got a question, I'm sorry, do we know for the middle one, the public parks, HOA, do we know those five properties?
No, I'm gonna be talking to Tara this afternoon, she was trying to give you the name of the school, because I don't wanna duplicate go to a school that's already being certified, or to a park that's already certified.
I'm just thinking, because we've got church, municipal building, church, so we should, if these three aren't, then we oughta be able to get, you know, these pretty easily done, because we're municipal buildings, so.
What's that?
That was on the spreadsheet she sent to us, but I didn't.
The school?
Yeah, the school.
I didn't see that. No, that's good, okay, chill. Let me, let me walk you through this, this, um, this is creating a spreadsheet here, and it gives you, um, the registration goals, the activities, the points, the days accomplished, points earned, and who's leading the group, and to answer John's question, I'm heading up registration and goals, and then education goals, Jill Grissette, as you can see, uh, registration goals, pardon me, I can get a page two here, uh, it's Leigh Anne Black, she's doing community project goals, and Mary's doing the administrative category. As part of the meeting on Wednesday night, uh, Leigh Anne Black was nice, and her, uh, her husband is is a commercial architect, or, anyway, he's gonna work on the logo for us, for our team, because as you know, Hawk and, and Matthews has a logo, all, all the teams have logos, so we're gonna, uh, have a logo developed, and hopefully, she'll give us status update on that.
You wanna turn on our echo, please?
Okay, oh, uh, Marsh.
I forget what it stands for.
Uh, Marvin Association Wildlife Habitat, I think it is, Sustained Habitat.
And wait, it's, it's what, Marsh?
Marsh, well, don't quote me with that, I think it's, it's, it's Marvin Association of Sustained.
Tell you what, I would, yeah, I'll get.
I don't have my computer with me.
I'll, I'll get that.
Yeah, we'll get it to you, but Jill Grissette came up with it. So anyway, you can see, we keep tally of the points, and of the hundred and fifty points, we've achieved fifty-eight thus far, so we have ninety-two points to go, the highlighted blue section in my, in my section are two, uh, in fact, the work's already been done, a letter of support from Mayor Polino, if he'll just sign it, and put a letter in at the top, that's five, uh, that's ten points. We've already written a proclamation, it's been given to Christina at a point later in the year, when appropriate, hopefully, he'll do a proclamation sometime, probably around April, so that'd be twenty, which would take us to the goal we have of fifty points for that one category, so.
And the proclamation is simply saying that, um, like April is wildlife.
You're dedicating a, a particular day for, for that, yes.
So it's not an event or anything, it's just a.
So if you wanna get me that, then I can go ahead and have that prepared for him, and we can put it on their April agenda.
I'll send it to you this afternoon.
Okay, that'd be fine.
And I've got the, and I'll give you the letter of support.
Yeah, if you'll give me that, I'll make sure the mayor gets it.
Okay, and just a letter ahead and whatever, so what I'd like to do, if it's okay with Mary, is every, oh, if our meetings, just give you an update on where we're at, and, and John, I appreciate your help on that.
Well, I'll work with Jill, because she's in my neighborhood, yeah, on the street.
She's a nice lady.
Yeah. Yeah, and she's been wanting to get involved in something over the years, so I'm glad to see.
So the next item is, uh, the tree that's, this, um, Friday, one o'clock, it will be at the church, so everybody go to the church. We only have an hour, so not a lot of time, so I'm gonna be breezing through things pretty fast, and my understanding is mainly, uh, this is about the budget for next year, um, the planning for that, um, so that's what I'm gonna focus on, um, and I'm assuming, Derek, that I, I need to do your part. Uh, C I P, too, okay. Okay, so.
Was there, do I recall there being a specific ask from council though, again, about the five-year plan for the trails, was that still open coming out of our previous joint meeting that?
Actually, it's, uh, the format changed, but I'm basically, I, I'm using her format of the capital project chart for Greenway construction, which I'm gonna show you guys, which is basically the same thing, um, it's just a different format for it. So, um, after the meeting, uh, well, first, I'm gonna start out, just turn on everybody. That, this is from the last survey, that, um, this, the question was, you know, what would you like the, the uh, village to focus on for the next five to ten years, and yet, as you can see, sidewalks and greenways are the highest thing on there. Um, and I know we have another survey coming out, but I just want to remind them, because they're going to flinch at some of the costs that are coming up, um, so I'm just gonna remind them, uh, of that, and speaking of costs, I would have some difficulty coming up with, you know, updated costs. The last asphalt cost I had was from the, um, C I P that was done in two thousand fifteen, I think, and, um, they had used, most of our greenways that are, that are coming up are, um, along the road or whatever, um, but they're supposed to be asphalt, which if you look at the bottom of this, that's eighty-five dollars a linear foot.
Just meat.
And they used that in the last C I P, but when I was looking at it, it's actually a ten-foot wide path, which, uh, our standard is eight-foot wide, so I, I took eighty percent of that cost, uh, and just showed you what that would be, it's still pretty high, it's sixty-eight, uh, Derek had talked to Tarpon, and, um, he said, he thought it would be between eighty-five and a hundred dollars for a six-foot, right, six-foot wide.
Eighty and a hundred was his ballpark.
80 and 100 was his ballpark high. He said both materials and gas costs are going up, making things a little more pricey. He also said, you can't just take 10 feet and divide it by five and scratch off 20%, you know. You can come down a little bit, but you can't come down, you know, you get to two feet wide, it's not just 20%. You know, there's like a, there's a base minimum, and then a incremental increase, you know, as you get a little wider, but.
But one of the other things I'm trying to do is get a more recent example. And I thought of Belgro, because it's, it hasn't been that long since it's built. They actually have a bridge, too. And I asked Derek if he could reach out to them, and they, he hasn't been able, they haven't returned a phone call yet. But I think that would give us a, an actual, you know, example of, you know, something that's, that hasn't, it hasn't been done up a long ago. But given all that, I don't think, if, if what he, Tarpen is saying is costs are rising substantially, that asphalt's gonna be something that we can do, that we can afford, basically. And so.
It's funny how that works, because all those years, we heard it's because the price of oil and gas was going up so high. Now it's all gone down, but they're still saying it's because of the price of gas and oil. You know?
Yeah. So, I mean, he may be blowing smoke, and it may be that Belgro gives us some examples, and they say, oh, it's not that expensive. But I think, or what I'm going to suggest to council is that maybe we go to concrete. And this lists the pros and cons for each of these different kinds of things. And I didn't see anything substantial, other than for, as a con for concrete, other than wielded users, it's the last point, you know, that there's.
The expansion joints.
Exactly. It makes it a little bumpy. I think over the long term, probably, concrete is a little bit hard to maintain, because if you have a crack or something, you gotta take the whole section out. Versus asphalt, you can fix it, I think. But just looking at the cost, I don't see there's any way we can afford asphalt anymore, particularly if he's tripped.
Because Mary, it's actually, do we do the eight feet? Is it the sidewalk?
Well, what we're supposed to do is, according to our standard, is eight foot everywhere, except for natural paths. For asphalt and concrete, it's supposed to be eight foot. But you'll see in my documentation, I actually drove a lot of these sections, and they're right in front of people's houses. And there's no way they're gonna allow us to put an eight-foot path.
Yeah, that's next.
So I think that there are sections, particularly if you go to concrete. And if you look in front of the, like Marvin Creek, right, between Marvin School Elementary is and the front of the Preserve, it's, it's only five feet, it's a sidewalk, it's five feet.
Probably four feet or something.
Right. And so, what I'm gonna tell them is that I don't think we can afford asphalt. We're trying to get better information, but I think, and I don't see that there are a lot of cons with concrete. And over the long run, maybe it'll be more expensive to maintain, but I just don't think we can afford the asphalt. And also, I don't, because of where they're going, it depends on the sections. Like in Ennis Brook, they have a nice, big frontage, and we could do eight path, eight-foot path. But in a lot of these, I don't think we can get that wide. It would cost less money to, to do that. And I think all you're doing is, is you're saying, people like bikers and stuff, we don't want you on, because that's where you need your width.
Well, it also makes a difference inside or outside of DOT, right?
I don't know, that was, that was one of my questions.
And if it's inside DOT, the price goes way up.
Oh, really?
And especially if you've got little things. Because, you know, if you think about a lot of the areas along Marvin Schoolhouse Road, a lot of those, it's almost sidewalk right off the street.
Right.
Had to be done within the DOT right-of-way. And once you do that, there's a lot more engineering, all sorts of things. Like even a little culvert that you might have water retention issues. They have to put in this $120,000 catch basin. You know, and stuff like that. So I'm just saying, you gotta be careful of whether it's inside or outside of that, that DOT.
Yeah, one of the things I was gonna ask the guy, since I had him on the phone, is.
So the one with rainwater, is that a catch basin or a?
Yeah, I remember all of a sudden, that was like blowing the number out, right over by the, the school there, you know, where there's, yeah. It had to be like over-engineered, you know, for, for what was just kind of sustaining water, you know?
Well, and I'll find out from the, from him, at a minimum, what the right-of-way is. I think it's 15 feet from the, either, I think it's the side of the concrete, asphalt.
Because once you get outside of that, then you're getting really into people's properties, you know? So that might be the cheaper way to go, but it's also the more invasive way to go.
Right. So anyway, that's just a general thing that I'm gonna do at the beginning, is to tell them that we're still working on costs. And I'm not certain of my costs, but.
And it was easier for us to pay for that then, because that was where all the power networks were going.
Yeah, because it was like $400,000.
Yeah, I remember one stretch of Marvin Schoolhouse Road was like $460,000.
So I'm gonna give you guys two things. This is, this is the actual CIP that they, they will see. And I have the detail behind it, but I'm gonna give you right now. So we can go to the details.
Now, is this just for the trail, Mary?
These are the, the greenways construction.
Okay. Because Derek's has called the same thing, and so I wonder if we should put on here, greenway trails, to differentiate each one.
Yeah, I'll just say greenway construction. Under apartment, maybe. Yes. Okay, so if you look at the second thing that I gave you, that's stapled together, that has the detail behind it. When, after the meeting, I, I met with Chris about the spreadsheet. And also, she gave me some, a lot of information about some things that, she and Laura went through a project where they were trying to record the value of all the easements that we have. It was under the, after the last audit, they were told that they needed to record those as an intangible asset, I think. But anyway, they, they found some information, and she also gave me a lot of other information as far as the fan lou, you know, details, also other easements that we have. And what I did, too, was print it out. Another map. And this one has. This one has. Properties on here, it has structures on here. I've outlined subdivisions, because I feel like that, when we get into the conversations about how hard easements and things are gonna be, it's important to know that. Originally, I just printed it out so I could measure the distances, because I wanted to confirm what was previously put in the CIP. And so we can start going through the individual ones. The first couple are things that we already have in, in the works. Amber Meadows, if you look at the detail, which is this page, this page here. There's, you can see at the top right here, that's where it tells you the name of the trail right here. Okay, so the estimate was $17,000. Chris, my understanding is in that 250, the developer was gonna pay for the bollards?
Yeah, I heard that. I thought that they put those in already. Didn't they, Derek? They put those, those poles in on the Amber Meadows Trail already?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're there already, and they paid for those.
Okay. So that was part of the estimate, so I took that out. And my understanding is that the developer's supposed to give us $11,000, too.
They are, and they're still following up on where that check is.
And is there someone actively doing that, or is that waiting for the planner to come?
No. It's, we are actively talking to them, because they've been asking for some bonds to be released. So it's part of that conversation.
Okay. All right, so I think we can comfortably leave that in there and say that they will do it. So our portion would be the 4,400, to, to bring it up to the standard limestone. The next is the village hall. Trail, there's, at the very end, once the village hall is finished, Derek said that there's about 150 feet we'll have to do for the connection. You know, the Preserve, Toll Brothers are, they're doing the majority of it, but we'll have to do about 150 feet. And I put that in at 875, a linear foot. And I put it in 2019, '20, because if, if they break ground in May, it's possible that, you know, it could get done next year. Next one is Ennis Brook. The CIP from the last time had $50 for an asphalt path. And so that's what I used. The only thing I can think of as the reason it was lower is because there, it's flat. There's no trees really to cut down or anything, and maybe that makes it simpler. But they had, because they used $85 for everything else, so again, I don't know if it's right or not. That's what I used, and that was my justification.
When, when they say must wait for sewer line replacement, that assumes that, I know they're, they need to replace them, because things are having a problem. But once that occurs, eventually sewer lines get replaced again.
But what we heard or found was that if they were to dig up anything, just like Derek said, it's been, they're just taking his fence down to do it. They have to replace that.
Okay.
So if.
But they, they, but they, but they can't put limitations that would preclude us from putting asphalt over there?
I don't think so.
No, I, I think the discussion with the HOA from President from Ennis Brook was just that, the work is gonna be done out there, like, in the next year, like, it's planned to be done. So why would we want to build a trail now that could potentially get damaged, et cetera? And let's just wait to see.
And I agree with that.
So as far as the easement, we are allowed to, there are things that you can't put on top of it, but it's like you can't put permanent things on top of it. Like, I don't think, like, you could, you couldn't build like a structure over it, but I think a trail.
I, I think, well, we're calling it a trail. I think there might be a difference in how they look at an asphalt versus a natural. So we, I think we just wanna check that out. For, from an easement perspective, you know?
Is there someone on the staff that could call the, I guess it's.
I mean, I'm happy to, because I've had conversations with them already.
Yeah, just to make sure.
Well, and the other thing would be to ask, you know, I'd ask Ken and Derek if they knew, if they've gotten any recent updates from them as far as timing? Because that, that makes a difference as far as what we usually put it down to. You know, they're doing the sewer line itself.
I, I, I'll check my emails from him, but timing and you wanna know trails built over easements?
Well, not.
I'd say a sidewalk.
Natural, natural versus asphalt.
Okay.
Question.
I can ask him, he's very quick to respond.
Okay, and, and what I also wanted to point out to you guys is, if you look at the map, here's Ennis Brook. I did not put in the, the section between the Preserve and Ennis Brook, where that homeowner's already told us that he's not gonna allow us, he's not gonna give us an easement.
Right.
So I didn't put that section. But there's also a homeowner on the other side, that we would have to get anything, and I could not find anything, Chris, in that list.
Oh, there is no easement there.
Okay. So.
To nowhere.
Yeah. That's 375 feet that's included in this cost, which made me feel a little bit more comfortable about using the $50 a foot. But what we, what I did find out is across the street, Woodcliff, from Chris's research on easements, it says that we have a easement around the surrounding.
We, we did, yeah.
Well, we'd have to cross the street, but my understanding is if we do the, the refuge, then we'd be crossing the street right to the end of Ennis Brook anyway, which would be right there. But again, it goes to nowhere.
Unless Woodhall, well, then we're, then we're on the other side of the street.
Yeah.
There's already a sidewalk there. Like, if, if you cross the street at the end of Ennis Brook, like, where that, there's a sidewalk there, and it goes, it cuts across the street, and then there's a sidewalk, and it deadens into the fourth tee box at Firethorn.
Yeah.
Right, right. But if we went across to, because we can't, I think it's, it's actually within Woodcliff is where we'd have to cross over based upon where this property line is.
Yeah.
But we do have an easement there, so I just wanted to point that out. We also have the issue of this, the Saddle Avenue and Pacer, which, you know, they won't let us in there. This is all within Marvin Estates, and.
Derek, so they're giggling.
I wanted to ask Derek, does Marvin Estates have a, Estates have an HOA?
Isn't there a sidewalk already on the Marvin Creek side?
Oh, this is just the, the edge of this subdivision?
Yeah, they do have a sidewalk coming all the way up to the.
Runs its length of this.
They're on the back side, yeah, this is already there.
Yeah.
I think it comes up to the Wheatfield Road, like, it connects right here.
Okay.
And then it connects to, it doesn't connect, but the road kind of ends here, and the Sardis Road or something, that kind of ends here.
You said traffic, right?
Are you talking about within Marvin Creek?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's a private Marvin Creek-owned trail that you're talking about. Those trails on the back side.
On the back side, which is kind of a dumb part.
Yeah, those are not public greenways. Those are owned by Marvin Creek.
Okay, so, yeah, this kind of runs in parallel to that, right?
Yeah.
And I didn't put this in here, but if we were to stay on this side, and we ask Firethorn, because the HOA owns the strip in front of the fence, maybe we could use that. That, that gets us to Jokar. And then you have to figure out how to get this last piece connected. But I didn't put this in the budget. But those would be, I'm, I'm just throwing those out there as.
That's, that's been, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
That's been the hard part for a long time, Jokar.
But you can connect to the Sardis, right, on the back side, and you can connect to the street, and then come maybe.
See, but if Marvin Estates won't let us go down the street, I bet they will not let us go behind people's properties.
Well, it's also with individual homeowners you're talking to, because there really is no Marvin Estate. It's kind of like Providence Estate.
Well, when, when Melody asked them, she asked Robert, and she said, he said, that he didn't think that they would be open to us, you know, walking down their streets. But I, I was hoping they had an HOA, so we can go to them and just say, we're not talking about, I mean, cars, I mean, it's not gated now. So cars aren't going down there. All we'd be talking about are strollers and walkers and things like that. And I know, you know, Robert feels like that they wouldn't allow, but it just makes sense. So I, I, I'm not really proposing this completely, but I'm just saying.
Where are you trying to get two and three?
Uh, we're just, just saying that people.
Pacer and Saddle.
Yeah, let people walk on Saddle Avenue and Pacer Road.
But it saves us from that corner of Jokar and Waxall Mall.
Right. You know? So you wanna do Saddle and Pacer?
So you wanna do Saddle and Pacer to connect to-
Joker.
A potential Joker in front of all-
Or Marvin.
To Marvin Ridge. Right there.
Both of the roads connect to Marvin Ridge. Yeah.
But, um, it, it just, and it would be a lot more pleasant for people to be able to walk, you know, not along this busy-
Not on the main road.
Yeah. And again, we're not, we're not-
We wouldn't even be building anything then.
Exactly.
We would just be pointing the trail sign, you know, down to here, and then down to there.
So, to me, I would rather go through the effort of trying to get a, you know, meeting with individual homeowners that are-
Well, here, here's the thing that you probably have to look at, is it's, if it's developed like my neighborhood is, there are probably groups of homeowners that have some sort of covenant that requires them, so you may find that there's a group that are just on saddle that, in their, in their deed, not that there's an HOA or anything, but in their deed, they are required to maintain that section of road. Because somebody's gotta be responsible for the road.
Because it's private. Well, and I was actually gonna meet with Derek another time, just to say, get his, because he knows when people walk, so, but if he has any ideas or thoughts, I mean, is there something that we could give them that would make, encourage them? Because all we're talking about are people walking along the, the roads. They're not gated now, so you have cars going through there, we're not talking about cars.
Yeah.
But Robert said, you know, absolutely not, they're not going to, but, anyway, the whole reason I brought this up too is because the next one I'm proposing is the Joker. I'm sorry. The, the next one on here is the second phase at Tollmore, but then I'll talk about Joker in a second. The second phase at Tollmore, um, we got an estimate of twelve thousand dollars to do the construction, and then two thousand for the survey, which Chris said that she's, she just paid recently. So I can probably take that out, but and that, we were supposed to do it this year. And that's why it's in this year. But, right now, we met with, Christine and I met with the HOA President about a week ago. Basically, we're waiting on them to sign off, either the builder or the HOA, I'm not clear who needs to sign off on the easement for the trail. And that's waiting on the planner to be hired. The survey's done, and then it would have to be recorded. And after those are done, then they can do the construction. The, there was a, an email where Laura said she spoke to someone at the developer. His name isn't here someplace. And I was wondering if staff could follow up with them, it's about the barbed wire. She spoke to Pulte, David White at Pulte Land Development. And he indicated that he will have the barbed wire removed in the easement area. And this was a conversation they had on March fifth nineteen, uh, two thousand eighteen.
Got it.
And that was barbed wire where, on the trail?
Within the easement, uh, it's, I looked at it yesterday and it's still there.
Is this in the Phase One area or the Phase Two?
In the Phase Two.
Is that the Tollmore trail?
So Derek, you're gonna do that, or you'll have someone do it?
I'll do it.
So again, there shouldn't be no maintenance there, but I'll take up the two thousand dollars, it's gonna pay. Okay, so, the next one is the Joker, Elysian Fields. If you look up on the next page, you know, I had thought that Elysian would need to be done by the developer. And, in the research that Chris and Laura did, they found the minutes where it was, it was a timing thing, it was like when they approved the original plan for Elysian, it didn't include it or something, I don't remember what the, the details were, but, anyway, they, they did exempt them from doing it, it does say that they, the developer has to grade it. I don't know what that would do, hopefully. I know I looked at it, and there's, there's a big group of trees between Marvin Creek and Elysian that I think would have to be removed, and if that's removed, then the grading would have to be done by him, so. So, on that. Elysian is actually just, uh, actually, I have a picture, I, I drove this, and Marvin Creek actually stops, the, the loop actually stops right after this last street. But then nine hundred and seventy-five feet of that is the section along Marvin, from Marvin Creek. And so Elysian would have only given us about, you know, this, this last section. But, it's the only thing that we have that, where we have easements. I could not find another place where we have easements, so, in my mind, all, all I keep hearing is that it's a lot of money, and there's a bridge involved, and that's why they kept pushing it off, and also the private roads thing. But, it's the only one we have easements for, so, to me, that's the only viable next project. And it would, you know, close up more sections, because then we'd have-
So you're talking about bringing it to, I don't know if that's Pacer or Saddle?
Yes, Pacer.
Right.
Pacer.
All the way back, so in front of the Elysian?
Yeah.
And in front of what's remaining of Marvin Creek.
Do we have those easements on that Marvin Creek section?
I assume so because of the loop, but I don't know that.
I thought the whole reason it stopped was because we didn't have them.
No, I think it stopped at the time because we couldn't put Humpty Dumpty together really, so why keep investing what were higher cost funds, I think?
So, okay, so you don't, so we need to look to see?
If we still have-
That last section of Marvin Creek, if we have those easements?
Yeah. It, it, it probably wouldn't even be separate, it probably would have been included in the original easement. It's just we never developed it because we didn't, it was gonna be a, another section we built to nowhere, and-
Yeah, and I just assumed-
They were trying to keep the cost down at the time.
I had assumed that they, when they got the easement, they would have gotten it from the hole.
Yeah, I know. But, yeah.
Because, um, so again, that's why I put it as the next project. And the costs I used were from the, the previous CIP, which was sixty-seven dollars a linear foot. I also noticed that along, the, the, the short little distance in front of Marvin Creek that's done, it's actually a sidewalk, and it's only four feet wide. Again, we may want to make that, make that section smaller, so again, it makes me more comfortable with the sixty-seven dollars a linear foot, but we also have the bridge, the other thing I'm hoping when he gets-
Well, that's another area, though, again, we gotta be careful of, is state DOT standards. Because when you're starting to talk about a little bridge, that's where we gotta kill it, over on the other side.
Well, I'm hoping when he gets, when he gets the person from Belgrove, they had to put in a bridge also. I don't know if you've seen that, they had to-
Yeah, I did.
So I'm hoping they can give us that information too. So we'll have accurate costs. So, that was my reason for putting it next.
But right now, that one twenty-five, six twenty-five is just the sixty-seven dollars per linear foot, no, no accommodation for the bridge.
Right, they had put it in there, and I'm assuming that it included the bridge, and I'm, I'm hoping with the, the smaller concrete sidewalks, and if we go to concrete, that it would cover the cost. But I really don't have good justification for it. And then, Dish, you need to leave it?
Yeah, we need to leave in a couple of minutes.
So, do I have a motion to excuse Dish?
I make a motion that we excuse Dish. Ten, twenty-two.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you. Then give you the cost, ten bucks eventually.
Okay. So, the next one I have, and I should have put the park trail next, and I, I think I will, I'll move that. But the next one I have is the one we talked about the last time, which is section, yeah, this is, yeah, this is why it's on, yeah, this is why it's on Marvin there. And, um, this, this is where the village hall will be, and we have talked about, this would be our next section. As you can see, this is a farm, a field, this is a, a field, no structure. This is, you know, something that's, the structure's way back here, and there's not that many, there's one, two, three, four, five. So, I put it in the next year.
I, one thing that I would say, is if you're dealing with those landowners, most of those folks are the same folks that are, let's say, hopeful in petitioning council and other folks about, you know, downtown project or whatever, you know, Marvin project. So, if that's the side of the street you're looking at, you're probably necessarily gonna see that get involved in the whole, you know, Marvin downtown center thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
With the, your initial plans was for the west side, I believe, because of Providence Estates being over here and not being Marvin, I don't know, but it's fewer people to deal with too, but I put it in the next year because of not having easements.
Yeah.
And negotiating those, and it's, um, the, before that section, I used a finland dollars from Wyndham, Wyndham, Windmore, which is about fourteen thousand. And then there's about twenty-three thousand from Broadmore. And, uh, Belgrove, which is down here. You know, on Bonds Grove, where it is, Belgrove, here. It's still, you know, fairly closed, because it is such a big dollar amount. And, to be honest, I think this is a whole pipe dream, I don't think we're ever gonna be able to do that section, so why?
Down Bonds Grove and everything, yeah, I think you'll have a better shot long term in the power lines to kinda
Exactly.
Run parallel to that.
So why not go ahead and use those?
And that would almost all be DOT higher money, you know, because it, yeah.
So, anyway, so that would knock it down forty-seven thousand dollars. The next one, and again, I'm, I'm gonna switch these, because I put the upgrades to park trails for next year. And, again, it would be covered by the finland dollars from Courtyards. A forty-two thousand.
You say forty-two thousand, is that, because it's the whole amount that we knew we had in back funding, or, I thought on this other one that we only had it as like twenty-two thousand?
For Courtyards-
For the park.
Oh, no, he put it in two separate years, but, um, to break the project up, but I would say if you're gonna do it, you do it all at the same time.
Okay.
Probably get a better price too.
Yeah.
Okay. So the next section is I. Uh, oh, Broadmore is gonna be done by the developer, which is G, this section right here. And then we have this section, which is H, which goes from Broadmore to Henry Nesbit. And there, we had had some discussions to make about going across the power lines. But once I printed out all the subdivisions and properties and everything, I'm like, there's no way, this is a gated community to Woodhall, so I couldn't even get in there to look at it.
Yeah.
I did drive back here to try to, to see how far I can see, but it's right through the middle of all these houses, and-
Yeah, well, actually, there is an existing path.
I've got an aerial too.
There is an existing path that comes through behind the Woodhall down here.
This, it makes it-
Yeah, right along this river here, there's an existing thing. So, what my thought was, was that eventually you could get there down to here, and that potentially, yeah.
Yeah, because see, here's Crane Road, here's Woodhall, basically. And this, you can sort of see, this is where the power lines, easement, I mean, are running, because you can see that there. So maybe, um, maybe it's here?
That doesn't seem right, though, because the entrance to Woodhall-
Is that here, yeah.
Where are the power lines? They're down by the school.
Yeah, you can sort of see, yeah. But maybe it's this little thing right here?
And, yeah, well, here's the thing, these properties right here have no houses on them. Right there.
Yeah, that's true, because the dot just means it's still under us. But I was saying-
I, I didn't know what was back there, really.
Yeah, I was looking at this here mostly. So, what I think is, is, is for I, I is Crane Road and this section where between Henry Nesbit and Crane Road. Which, I think the priority should be Crane Road, I think it's much easier to, to get the schools to give us easements, because you're dealing with one entity, and they're, hopefully they have concerns about their children's safety walking along. So I put that twenty-four hundred feet is, is the first thing. And then I said the next year we would do this section. And I think, if we went along the chimneys front, then you're basically got another school, which I think that they would agree with us, and then you've got the chimneys you'd have to deal with. Otherwise, if you go across the street, you've got all these homeowners.
Yeah.
And they're, and some of these are really close to the road too. However, with the chimneys, you know, we had the easement for the, the back.
Yeah.
And we never did it, well, we did, but we, we abandoned it. So I think they're probably not gonna be real happy with us if we ask for an easement along the front.
Yeah.
But you also look at it, it's a whole lot cheaper if we were to go along the back. This whole thing, the ten thousand-
Well, it is, yeah.
It's like a hundred and thirty-three thousand versus two hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Why did you walk away from that easement?
That was, uh, that was, it was kind of a political thing, where there was a change in council, and the P, this was, it was at a time where the previous Parks and Recreation Board was disbanded, because there was even court cases and dissension between the PRG Board and the council. So, the PRG Board at that time went out and got that easement from the chimneys. They built most of a natural trail that included some minor bridges, and, I mean, over wet spots, really. And then, new council came in, and they determined that the bridges that they just built weren't structurally sound, so they put chains across it. And it's been kind of abandoned since. Because there was also dissension, well, they're not even in Marvin. You know, so why are we building a trail there? So there was just a lot of dissension, you know, where town, village resources were gonna be spent, all sorts of things. But, there still is full existing easement to there, and I believe we have existing easements. Jill Grissette, yeah, and then, I've spoken to Cedar Hill, they're still very willing, so there is-
Oh, will they do that then?
Well, that's gonna be my proposal to council, because, um, but I know, I don't know if the politics are still there, but I put in, if you look at some, I know, and a hundred and thirty-three thousand, we can-
Well, and it's not an easy path or trail, I, we've walked it before, but I don't know if you ever have, you know, it was done ruggedly.
It was used a lot for horseback riding.
Correct.
I mean, a lot, like across the street, those horse farms, they would go back there and they use it all the time. I mean, a lot, like across the street, those horse farms, they would go back there and they'd use it all the time.
Oh, yeah, it's amazing. You're deep, you feel like you're deep in the woods, you know, in Sanskrit, wherever.
Well, originally, they, they were using twenty-five dollars.
There will need to be a bridge though, substantial bridge.
I put in the forty thousand dollars to the bridge.
Yeah, I heard sixty, seventy, but, yeah.
So, a hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, forty thousand includes the bridge. Also, it's not twenty-five dollars a linear foot, it's eight-seventy-five. So, I'm just gonna point that out to council while we need, it's still in the future. But I don't, it would be a lot more pleasant as far as walking. I think we could sell it to the horse community too. They would have to say, you know, you can't go on the path, but you can go alongside it, would clear that?
I think that would be difficult because it is, it is a narrow path that's, you wouldn't be able to say to those horse people, you can and you can't. It was originally being designed to, for the horse. If you look at most natural horse paths, they end up pretty good walking paths too, because they get tampered down, you know. I have horses that are big dogs in the backyard, you know, and so, yeah, you could say it affects my property, whatever. I'll recuse myself, but I don't even ride horses. But, but that's, that's where you're gonna come into some discussion is, the intent of that was supposed to be a natural path and it was gonna kind of lead to other natural paths, which include that. Because there is a natural path already, like I said, right here. It goes all the way back here to here. And then it goes all the way back behind to like Providence Downs. Goes all, this is a stream, that's why the property lines are so squiggly here. And that used to be a natural horse path that came all the way out to here. And so, the intent was people from Providence Estates, Cedar Hill, the other horse farms that they were trying to get to not sell their places and put ten more houses. The intent was they wanted to kind of do something to, you know, accommodate those folks in places where they had always ridden before. So, that's, that's where I was kind of saying before.
Well, what I think...
I know there's something there already. And I know there's actually, I think these are already written easements right here, at least behind like those like four or five properties.
Which properties are you talking about?
Homes.
Yes, I believe so. The, and then the other thing is, doesn't that go like, sort of like back behind Oak Brook into York?
Yes.
And there's easements at the end of whatever that road is too.
I know Jill Grissette had one.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, this is what I'm gonna say, because the cost, since all, that's, that's the only thing we care about for this thing, is we can say it will, it would be a natural.
It would be a natural one.
Right.
'Cause can I interrupt one more thing? And the problem too with that, remember, John, is there's no parking.
Well, correct, which is why...
You're right there on Henry, whatever that, is it Henry Nesbit? And there's like, maybe like a little, a little like gravel area on the side. But that's a pretty busy road and there's nowhere to park.
Well, which is why, on the opposite side of Henry Nesbit from the chimneys, Christina had had numerous conversations with Pulte, which owns that, because that was originally part of the chimneys. And there's a three-acre lot there, which we had extensive conversations. And I think Pulte was just kind of waiting to kind of negotiate that with us with something else. But it's right, yeah.
Yeah, it is still owned by the builder, I looked that up.
Yeah.
But that would be a concern, is parking, if we build the, like where are we?
Correct, but, but there is an ideal solution for that, that we've already discussed with the developer.
Well, it's just like Marvin Elementary though. I mean, a lot of people would park there. If you don't live in Marvin Creek, where do you park for, for the loop?
Yeah.
And people park at Marvin Creek. Well, you got Sandy Ridge here, can they park there? I, I know we're not condoning that, I'm just saying, we have, we only have one area thing where we have parking, yeah. So, I'm just saying, I think it makes more sense, it's less money, we have the easement.
Like people park at Marvin Elementary, I see them unloading their bikes all the time.
All the time.
Yeah. So, because I know there was a lot of discussion about the parking lot and, you know, how much expensive it would be and everything, but for right now, I think we just say, just want to point out that if you did this, it would be a whole lot cheaper than trying to do this, and it would be a whole lot more pleasant, you know, for people's experiences.
Well, and the discussion was also that the school would be supportive of that, because then they could have a nature trail, they could potentially bring the kids out on excursions or whatever.
So, I'm just gonna point that out. We both, we have them both in the capital plan now, the chimneys, the back part, because it was political football. I put way out into the future and put this one as being right after Crane Road. But I think, again, we only have an hour, and it's, it's into the future. So, for next year's budget, it's not an issue, but I think it's just something to point out.
One other thing I noticed is a lot of the South Carolina legacy park property owners, their backyards have been extending into our easement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do too. So, that's, I did have something, the dollars that I allocated that, let's see. Oh, Barcroft, we reduced the Barcroft and the remaining portion of courtyard. Because Barcroft is about twenty thousand and the courtyards was another, the only thing that was left, five thousand from that. Okay. This, and this one is just, and I probably should have put this one before. This is just to say what we were talking about before. I don't think, yeah, this T section that we were talking about here, I just don't think that's gonna work. Because this is what we were calling T.
With the Woodhall, oh, yeah, just the power lines, that was always gonna be a difficult one. And as I see it here, it's more difficult with Woodhall, that would go through Woodhall. And right here necessarily, you're, you're pretty well bifurcating a couple of backyards. Now, the question was gonna be, would these folks be okay if it went like this?
Yeah.
You know? That, that might make a difference.
Yeah.
But you gotta figure out something with Woodhall. And I know there's somebody on this backside of Woodhall that when people do use that trail, literally throws rocks at them and stuff.
So, anyway...
That gets so angry, yeah.
So, I, I took that out of consideration. And just to say that it makes more sense to go here or behind your, and then the Crane Road versus going now.
Yeah.
So, then, the next one is the chimneys trail that we were just talking about. Like I said, eighty-nine thousand for construction, forty thousand for the bridge. I separated that out, construction, but even four thousand for the soda, because we have a piece that we haven't, so, but, anyway. Kind of more base three, I put way out into the future. It's not a priority as far as I'm concerned. And the, really, the, this, this one is J, which is the other part of the power line. We've talked about putting that in, you know, after Providence Road is widened. There are some challenges. You've got Walden Pond, who hates us. I've heard, I don't know. But you can see the power line easement, but there's very, very few. And these, this community actually separated it, so, you know, you don't have any lots that go right up to it. This is Willow Creek, Providence Ridge.
But that is, that's HOA. We would have to talk to the HOAs, Willow Creek, I think, is the one that controls that.
But, but I see this as doable.
Yeah.
It's still way into the future because of Providence Road widening.
But then, if you think about it, it connects one, two, three, four. You know, if you did it in the back, it could connect four neighborhoods to the school, you know, without having to go on Waxall, Marvin, Bonds Grove.
Because honestly, this section, which is the last one, I don't think there's any way it's ever gonna happen.
The big long stretch, a long wax on Marvin Road, yeah, that would be extremely expensive.
Yeah, Bonds Grove too. This, to me, is a better connection to Providence Road, 'cause it's natural. And I just don't see this ever happening.
Yeah.
But I did put it in here.
That, that would be worth a lot of money.
Yeah, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, what I would show. And you've got all these homes that you have to deal with and some big estates along Bonds Grove too, that I just don't see agreeing to it. But I put it way out.
Well, and this is Waxall, you know.
Yes, yeah, exactly. Yeah, the yellow. So, I'm also going to, to, if you guys agree, tell the council that we have, we need to come up with a plan, action plan as far as how we start addressing getting some of these easements. Is that getting some of the council to meet with people? Is it us going to people's, you know, is it sending letters to people? I don't even know what the process would be.
Yeah, the, the way I would best describe the process is that it would start with individuals from our group picking out one small subset of neighbors.
Yeah.
And what, two people, 'cause you never wanna have just one, you know. But you would have two people, reach out to them, say, hey, we'd like you to come in and, you know, discuss something with you, and kind of have it planned out and show them what the vision is.
Right.
And at that point, you're gonna start to filter out, you know, between four or five neighbors, you know.
And, and in that case...
If there's anyone that's set against it, you know, can you address their issues? If not, you move on to another section, you know.
So, that was one of the things I was gonna tell them, is the fact that we don't have easements now. We're, we're gonna put some sort of plan together, you know, after we've discussed it. But again, that would be for the next year, 'cause the first one would be the wax, the F section we'd have to address. But I think it also is, is to talk about the Marvin Estates, us walking on their private roads too. To me, that would sort of be all within the same, yeah, thing. So, I'm done.
May I ask a question? Because I think this impacts the budget. Is, you've got under preserve internal roadway section U, you wrote developer.
Yes, Mary Scott, and I've asked, Christina's emailed her several times. She said that she found documentation saying that that was their responsibility.
Okay, we need to get that because the developer does not think it's their responsibility.
Right. I've asked like the last three meetings. And I think, I know that Christina's emailed her multiple times, she just said she's busy. But that's my, yeah, that's my assumption that that was approved, but we didn't have documentation. So, are you guys okay with that format? Again, we only have an hour, so I don't know about how much detail I'm gonna be able to go into. I did plan on showing them this, just so I can, you know, guide them through that. I think because of the village hall and everything, there's, there's my, sorry. Down at the bottom, last thing, I just wanted to show you, down at the bottom, I added, I probably screwed up. Christina spread it to you. But I just showed them what the family dollars would do to reduce each of these years to get to the total, less that family dollars. And then I'm using all hundred-and-forty-three thousand of the family. The last twenty-nine thousand...
And we're talking about all of the projects here.
Correct.
Yeah, so even like the T one that you're talking about, that would be much better way from.
Yeah. And the twenty-nine thousand in the last year, we, that's from the courtyards too. That's to pay for our portion of widening, doing the sidewalks along Providence Road for the DOT. That was, you know, a decision made. So, anyway, so that accounts for all the money that we have currently for family. We could be getting things from Marvin Gardens and who knows, other developers. But, and then at the bottom, it just talks about how many dollars we have set aside now in total for construction of greenways. So, if you just look at this year and next year, we're short. So, Chris, I'm assuming we have to make, if, if they agree to all these, we have to make an injection to make that difference up, is that true? So. Any other, you guys wonder?
No, I, a lot of work. Just to put this thing together, that's a lot of work.
And I did this twice. So, I, I know, you know, with the village hall being built next year, it's gonna be an issue. And maybe they'll push off the next one to Joe Carr for the next year. But at some, at some point, I, and the other thing is, I definitely do not want them to touch the hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand. I don't, because they're looking for funds, that's my fear, is if we don't justify it, then they're gonna take the money.
Yeah.
I know, and that's their decision. I'm not, I wasn't trying to make up things to, just to cover that. I'm just saying that I, I know that that's a real possibility, that if we, you know, move things in the future.
Mary, do you mind sending me those electronically so we can have that part of the packet for council?
Yeah.
Is, or is that something you want to hand out to them?
Well, I...
Do you want them to review that before your meeting?
I could do that, I could give them the whole thing, yeah, if they want to. I'll just make the, the couple of corrections that we talked about.
Okay.
And Chris, all this stuff that I've done down at the bottom, you know, you can do away with when you're, when you're fine. The other thing that we had talked about was maybe in the department up here saying grayway construction just to differentiate it from Derrick's.
Oh, yeah, you can make any of those changes either, just worksheets that were created for, just to all have a consistent format. And no, I like the family being minus out at the bottom and showing the sources. I mean, that's, that makes sense to me.
Very good. So, last one, here it is. All right, so, the next, I'm gonna be review the action items.
All right, I've got Vish will contact Marvin Creek on the cost of pedestrian refuge and signs. Barbie will ask the mayor to sign the letter and prepare a proclamation for a future council meeting, I guess the April one. And then Chris will call the, I guess that he'll, she'll call somebody regarding the sewer timing and trail naturally versus asphalt on Innes Brick Trail. And then, Mary Syke will continue to reach out to DOT on the roundabout hardscape and landscape. And Derek will reach out to Pulte regarding the barbed wire and the easement on Bay Tollmore Trail Phase Two. Was there anything else?
I think Chris is gonna look into the Marvin Creek easement for the last section.
Is that Marvin Creek?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure which sewer you were talking about. You were talking about Innes Brick Two.
Sewer line, but then easement in front of Marvin Creek on Joe Carr.
Yeah, this...
Two separate things.
It's for the, the last section of the loop.
Okay, so, Chris, easement, Marvin Creek, and Joe Carr. I'll get it from the table, I guess.
And the eleven thousand from Amber Meadows, where are you gonna follow up though, or Chris is gonna?
Uh, it's, we, we're all following up with it, yeah, it's all in the works. It's a chess match, kinda going back and forth.
And Derek, you were gonna call the builder about the barbed wire in Tollmore, right?
Yeah, I've already, already started the conversation.
And I'm gonna send Barbie them what Marsh stands for.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, because I didn't get the R part, it doesn't seem to be an R.
Okay, so, next, anything else you guys have? So, board comments? So, are there any other items? If there's no other items, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn the village of Marvin Park's Recreation Greenway forward meeting at ten fifty-two AM.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good meeting.